Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, June 24th, Killable Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would please, we call the meeting to order and if you would please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would also please join us for a moment of silence. Okay, first up this evening is agenda approval. Um, but I would like to make a motion, um, that we approve the agenda with two changes, the first being removal of new business item number one, um, Eddie Goodrich Patent Landscape and Market Evaluation Report Conversion Process Septic to Sewer with Water Treatment. This is at the, at Eddie's request. And the second requested change to the agenda is to move the town attorney's agenda, um, just before new business.
Oh, so moved?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, um, we'll turn it over to Steve for our public hearing this evening.
All right. There will be one public hearing tonight and, uh, conducted by the Board of Commissioners and following rules will apply to that, uh, public hearing. A notice was published in the newspaper posted on the town bulletin boards in accordance with statute requirements has been filed by the town clerk in the official record for the hearing. Uh, the town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner and any written statements will be recorded in a summarizing manner and made a part of the record of the hearing and, uh, shall be submitted to the town clerk. Anyone who wishes to speak, please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue into a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there's a spokesperson for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the town clerk. When you come to the microphone, please identify yourself, uh, and there will be no debates. At this time, the public hearing, please come to order and this hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners to consider Chapter 152 subdivisions, Section 152.59, recording of exempt plats to allow exempt plan recombination of previously subdivided lots that will reduce non-conformities. No one has signed up to speak at this public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this public hearing? There apparently are no speakers.
Okay. All right, um, any questions?
Hmm, no.
Okay.
Does, um, do we want anybody to explain that to the, like Greg or somebody?
If you would like.
Yeah, he had, he had an anticipatory look on his face, that's why.
You confused that for, there was agreement. But if you'd like me to explain it, Madam Mayor, I certainly will.
Certainly. Thank you.
Okay, um, this, this, um, item before you tonight is, is designed to add flexibility to the town code while allowing some of our old smaller lots, we have a lot of very small lots that don't meet the current standard to recombine it in a way that, that makes more sense and eliminates non-conformities and certainly creates no new non-conformities. So that's the idea, is to add some flexibility to our ordinance and also help people out.
Is that, there's, we have some lots that are really small. I mean, there's some there like thirty-five feet or twenty-five or?
Virginia Air Shores has quite a few twenty-five by one hundred foot lots and currently you have to at least combine two of those to get a, to build a, um, get a septic tank permit. And that would certainly legitimize combining those and allowing those.
But by ordinance, our ordinance currently, you would have to combine six of them to have a recombination plat legally signed and recorded. And this would allow you to do less than that as long as it decreased or did not create any non-conformities.
That's a part I wasn't sure of, thank you.
Our minimum size right now by ordinance is fifteen thousand square feet and that included recombination plat. This will allow recombination plats of a lesser than fifteen thousand square feet, but without creating any non-conformities and making it less non-conforming.
Thank you, thank you both.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, the motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the proposed amendment to Chapter 152 subdivisions, 152.59, recording of exempt plats to allow exempt plat recombination of previously subdivided lots that will reduce non-conformities. The Board of Commissioners find that this proposed amendment to Chapter 152 subdivisions, 152.59, recording of exempt plats to allow exempt plat recommendation of previously subdivi- recommendation, is that right?
You're right.
Recombination, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, recombination. Okay, mine says recommendation. Um, of previously subdivided lots that will reduce non-conformities. It is consistent with all the comprehensive plans or other officially adopted plans of the town of Kill double Hills that are applicable and that the amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it will provide property owners more opportunities to recombine lots with less than the required minimum square footage and it will reduce non-conformities.
I'll second that.
Any questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we will move on then to the first time set aside this evening for public comment. It's a smaller audience tonight than usual, but, uh, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Nope. Okay, we have several, so Sue will start us and so, um, when you are, uh, before you speak, when you approach the podium, um, if you'll just please identify yourself by name and address, please. Welcome, Sue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Sue Kelly. I live at 211 C Village Lane and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission. You have tonight before you an ordinance that deals with this tough issue of public display and public storage. I don't think there's anything that's taken any more time with the CAC than this item, even the FAR, for example. It's something that we've been trying to figure out since the very beginning of the creation of the Community Appearance Commission, but we think we've presented you with a very viable situation. You actually have two versions in your packets, I believe. One is the original version as proposed by the CAC and the other is the planning board's approved, which did omit, um, a couple of items and I'll speak briefly to that. The first thing that we had to do, and let me say first, that some key people took a big role in this and finally made it happen. This has been an issue that Melinda Magowski of the CAC has cared about from the beginning of our work and she got together with Chris Merrick, who was very instrumental in, uh, being able to share his ideas and also with our own Meredith Guns and they put together this definition and this ordinance into something we think is really viable. The first issue I guess would be how do you define the difference between public storage and public display? So we proposed that if something is fenced in and behind a structure, it would be storage and in front of the structure, it would be display. So if it could not be seen from the right-of-way, it was storage. If it could be viewed, it was display. And that seems to make a great deal of sense. Then we got into the question, of course, of, well, there were a couple of things, but let me talk first of all about how many. The proposal before you, which the planning board did also agree with, is that a given business would be allowed to display up to ten of any given item. So that's ten bicycles, ten kayaks, ten whatevers. And that beyond that, the rest would have to be out of sight as public storage. And then, um, the question that kind of caused some of the controversy, um, B1 and B2, which are the parts that the plan board removed, um, B1 is about appearance. It's very similar to what we discussed in terms of the flag ordinance and when something gets tattered or damaged or looks rough. So if display items don't meet a certain quality of, of look about them, if they're not looking, uh, how they should look, then we would have the ability to tell the folks that they were in violation, should you adopt this. And then B2, um, says that the stuff that's on display should be unpackaged. Now, I will say that most of us had in mind a particular, um, place, I'm not going to mention who it is, that we really had big concerns with. They had tremendous piles of stuff in front of their building, um, a bunch of them were wrapped in plastic that blew around. It wasn't shrink wrap and after a while that got tattered, um, and, and they still do have tremendous amounts of things and a bunch of them are in this plastic, which is, I mean, it's okay right now, but it doesn't look too great. So we would like to propose that it be unpackaged. And, um, I think that the rest of these things probably are pretty clear. There are some things that are not included in our proposal, lumber yards, garden centers, automobiles, including rentals and repair businesses, which one of you may appreciate that that's listed that way. But anyway, we think it's workable. We really like it in the original version with B1 and 2. We think those are fairly key items to making this work. We think it's simple. As you know, we don't have, um, we're not gonna assign one of our police officers the job of going around and, and checking out the stuff and issuing citations. This is like so many other things we do, we would respond to complaints and then somebody would go check it out and see if it is in fact a violation of the code. I hope I've listed everything that should be mentioned. Again, I hope you will consider the version with B1 and 2 intact and we thank you for your consideration and if anybody has any questions, you know, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
James?
James Almeny, 909th Avenue. Uh, full disclosure, as most of you know, I'm a member of the planning board and I also would like to speak to the, uh, the item in front of you in relation to storage and display. Uh, I find it interesting, first of all, that one of the members of the CAC who was an intricate part of bringing this together, Chris Merrick, this is gonna impact him greatly. This is one, he has one of those businesses that is directly affected by this and he is all for it. I think that speaks volumes. Uh, the two items, um, during the meeting, I was actually a no vote for this. Uh, the reason why I was a no vote is because I disagreed with the removal of the two items that were on there, hoping that when it reached you, that, that these items will be placed back in. You've already voted on the, the idea of something being tattered as far as flags are concerned, so I think that directly, voting or not having that in this directly flies in the face of that particular item that you already voted on. So I think that that, it's a no-brainer that that has to be voted in. And I think we all can agree, if, we're not gonna require these businesses to unpackage items that are placed in front of their business, you know, that, that means that they could have cardboard boxes with, you know, the front cutout with chairs stacked in there and I, I don't think that would look good at all and I think that that would just cause a big problem as far as them being weathered. So I think the idea of them having to be unpackaged, I think is very important. So I'm hoping that you'll add those two items back in, uh, when you vote this, uh, vote on this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Anyone? Okay, then we will, um, move on. Response to public comment, obviously we'll, um, address this when we get to that agenda item and hopefully you all will stick around, knowing both of you, I would think you would, because we may have questions at that time that we would like to, to ask, so, but thank you for your comments. Okay, um, then we will actually move on to, um, our town attorney's agenda.
Right. Madam Mayor, uh, some litigation has been filed against the town, uh, as a result of your Municipal Service District and Beach Nourishment, uh, project and we need to go into a closed session so we can discuss that and also another threatened litigation involving Beach Nourishment, which is unnamed at this time. The other one is the Morrison lawsuit against the town of Kill double Hills. So a motion to do that would be able to-
I, um, sorry. I'll make a motion that we go into closed session to consult with our attorney under North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11A3. This is to protect attorney-client privilege and to concern, and to consider and give instructions concerning a potential or actual claim, administrative procedure, or judicial action if known. The title of the action is Morrison versus the town of Kill double Hills, um, and the threatened action that's, uh, has yet to be filed. So that's a motion.
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, we will be back. I will make a motion that we return from closed session.
I'll second it.
Comments, discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And in the closed session, we discussed the pending litigation and the potential litigation and the board has given instructions to counsel about proceeding with the defense of the matter that has been filed and, uh, we will wait to see what happens with the other threatened litigation and, uh, but we have our instructions from counsel. There was no action taken in the closed session that requires a vote of the board.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on then with our agenda to new business, um, on the agenda. It is item number two, because if you'll recall, we removed item number one, so, um, this then is the recommended adoption of the Almarl Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And Greg or Meredith? Meredith's gonna go over that with us. Thank you.
Well, I will make this very brief. The towns and counties are required to have a hazard mitigation plan to receive FEMA assistance in the case of a disaster. Hazard mitigation plans are required every five years. The last hazard mitigation plan we did in 2010, we combined with the county. It was a Dare County Hazard Mitigation Plan and every town had a appendancy that they had their specific, um, items, population and things like that, critical facilities. And this year, um, when the update came up, we got word from FEMA, Sandy Sanderson got word from FEMA that he, that they were looking for regional plans. They didn't want a million plans, they wanted regions to do plans. So our hazard mitigation plan is the Almarl Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's eight counties, um, got together, we had several meetings in Curry Tuck and, uh, the Wooton Company was sent to, uh, was hired to develop the plan. Additionally, our hazard mitigation plan, for those of us who do the community rating system for, uh, National Flood Insurance Program, we get points for our hazard mitigation plans and we have specific things that we need included in that plan. I included several of the items that were reviewed by the planning board that are required for our CRS rating in addition to FEMA assistance. It included just the introduction about the public being involved, the public outreach, where the surveys were done, our critical facilities, our, the hazards that exist in our town, um, and area, and our goals and objectives and strategies for mitigating those specific hazards. And the hazards include the obvious hazards that you would think of being hurricanes, nor'easters, floods, tornadoes. It also includes man-made hazards, including pandemics, active shooters, things of that nature that are man-made. The plan is about five hundred and plus pages long. I included a lot of the, uh, important things that dealt with the town, specifically what the planning board also reviewed as our local 510 committee for the hazard mitigation plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Meredith. Does anyone have any questions about the plan?
No, I don't.
I, um, I like, I don't know, your personal experiences with, or your thoughts on, um, the regional approach. I think it makes good sense in reviewing all the information and I think it's, uh, combining all of the different counties and, and municipalities that are involved. Just, it, it makes for a much more robust, um, anyway, I thought, I think it's really good that we're part of the, the regional plan versus what we did in 2010 with just Dare County.
The only challenge we had in creating the plan was the CRS, the community rating system, because not all of the counties and municipalities that were involved do the CRS. So we had to do, the, the counties that did and municipalities that did kinda had to do these things on the side of the bigger group, have smaller groups to meet our requirements to keep our, um, flood insurance rates down.
And I think I read in there, again, that FEMA has reviewed all of that and so-
The FEMA and the state have reviewed it and the, once a resolution is adopted, we'll send it to the state and, um, we'll be-
Good to go.
-in good standing.
Great. Well, thank you for all of your work.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Meredith.
Thanks.
So, I thought we had good, um, you know, it's nice, out of the hundred and some odd surveys, um, well, I guess there were four hundred and eighty-four of the community. Killable Hills had sixteen and a half percent of those. Um, you know, when you look at seventeen, we were up there, anyway, of the seventeen areas that, uh, had people responding. So, okay, um, well, a, uh, motion would be in order to adopt the, uh, resolution.
I'll make a motion that we, um, adopt the Almarl Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Um, is that, do we need to adopt, well, it's just the resolution. We need the resolution, specifically the words, the-
The resolution.
Okay. Oh, okay, right. Okay, so, yeah, so it's the resolution, the res, the motion is for the resolution to be adopted as well as the plan.
As well as the plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Thank you. Um, item number, well, the next item is the proposed amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, uh, Section 153.002 definitions and the addition of, uh, Section 153.083, regulate outdoor display to address regulation of outdoor display of merchandise. Certainly, this is already, we've kind of heard a little bit about this. We, um, scheduled, we talked about this, um, at our previous meeting. It's been through the planning board, um, and what's been brought back to us tonight, as actually Sue indicated earlier, we have language, basically kind of two versions. We have what was originally proposed by the CAC and sent to the planning board and then, um, a couple of, um, changes to that, specifically removing, um, two items under Section B of the 153.083. Um, so do you guys need any more overview or are we able to just go into discussion on this?
I don't need any more overview.
We're pretty good, okay. So good, I'll just go into discussion. Comments?
I like the original one with one and two under B.
Yeah, I do too. I, I attended a good many of the CAC meetings and, um, I was at the planning board meeting, the last meeting they had where they discussed this and, uh, I agree with some of the comments were made earlier about this, that, uh, the people that worked on this did, did a lot of work and, and they really brought together a difficult, uh, brought us something that's been a very difficult issue dating back many years. And, uh, I think the condition of something that's out there, whether it be an umbrella or a lawn chair or whatever, is this as important as the condition of the flags, which we've already indicated, so, and the fact that I don't think anything should be out there in a wrapper, pretty much. So I agree with bringing one and two back in, B1 and 2.
I definitely agree on 2. And I'll, I'll probably be overwhelmed on 1. Um, I didn't support the condition of it when we did the flags, um, so I would, I would stay consistent with that, just because I think it's, it opens us up for a lot. I don't know if we've had any complaints on flags, on conditions of flags.
Not, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Not the, not the complaints for-
Yeah, so I don't know if it's-
The ordinance, right.
Right, so I don't know if it's really gonna, gonna matter. Um, I certainly agree with, uh, number 2. Multiple businesses have items that are still unpacking materials and it's certainly not attractive and, you know, especially after it's set out there for a couple of weeks with the wind and weather that we get here. I, I do appreciate all the hard work that's been done on this, uh, and it's definitely been a couple of years in the making, um, so I think this is gonna be a good step forward. Thank you.
Um, what are yours, you guys, the other, um, change from what was put forth by the, the planning board was related to exceptions. If you recall, they removed the exceptions for garden centers and automobiles, but that was in the CAC? Is that, oh, what?
I think the only change was the B1 and B2, right? Right.
I see what you're saying. B and C are-
Uh, well, they weren't on the memo, uh, were they just left off of the memo? Okay, well, that's okay. I just saw it as a difference. I had circled it going, okay, so, so there was no change to that. All three exceptions are still part of both. Okay. Okay, well, good, then we don't need to discuss that. Okay, all right. Um, I, I had a question. The, um, stating that for outdoor storage, that the items are gonna need to be either, I get located on the side or the rear of the primary structure, I think that's great, that they're gonna either need to be screened or located within an enclosure. Did either the CAC or the planning board talk about what potential hardship that may have on any business to actually have an enclosure? And then what happens if they can't put an enclosure because of lot coverage or because of something like that? Are we creating some type of undue hardship?
Good question.
The enclosure and screening actually was talked about in our small group quite a lot and then it was talked about at the CAC. Screening, uh, also includes vegetation. Uh, you could do a vegetative screen like we require between commercial and residential properties, or you could do some sort of fence or, uh, enclosure that, that is, that you can't see through. So, um, any type of vegetative screen wouldn't count against lot coverage or, um, have any additional setbacks. So, once we kind of, that's why the screening in addition to enclosure was, was, um, both were included.
And so it is meant to be either screened or enclosed.
Not visible, right. Does that help you?
And I just, I, I hesitate on that one a little bit. I get it from the, from the appearance, um, but then are we setting our staff up to be challenged repeatedly from folks saying, well, you know, are we saying you cannot see it at all or my trees haven't grown up enough so you can kind of see through there and you see it? I, I just, I don't know, I mean, other-
I think if you ask the town attorney, if it's visible from the right-of-way, it's visible from the right-of-way.
Is it, would it be-
So then we're saying, I mean, basically- So, then we're saying, I mean, basically, if we're going by the way this is proposed, um, well, I guess, people are still go- I, I envision some of our places, they're gonna put it on the side, okay, 'cause, or rear, which is fine. Um, I don't have any issue with that. But then are we saying, in addition to being on the side or the rear, you're not, it's gotta be screened so you can't see it even when it's on the side of the rear, side or the rear? 'Cause that, I think, is gonna be really hard for some businesses to do that.
Well, the, the building could be a screening if you can't see it from a right of way, 'cause it says merchandise located outdoors not visible from a public right of way by screening or location within an enclosure. If their only right of way is in the front and they put it in the rear and you can't see it, then it's not visible.
Okay.
They don't have to do anything, except for put it in the rear. If they're a corner lot, they would have to maybe put up a fence or a vegetative buffer to keep it from being visible from the right of way.
From whatever public rights away are-
Correct.
Around them.
Mm-hmm. Keep in mind, we all, we have a, a buffer and landscaping section of our ordinance today, and a lot of these things already exist to a, to an extent. And if you have tall items like kayaks, I think, um, it was discussed at our meeting, Sue may remember that Chris Merrick said he may have to extend his fence a little bit because his kayaks are taller than his fence. But, you know, there, there's ways that people have, at least some people have thought it through and-
Okay. Well, that's the big thing. I just was wondering how much discussion there was on this particular, 'cause that's the one thing that I, it was like, whoa. 'Cause that may be a big change for folks. Um, maybe, may not be, but, but they've thought about it and they've discussed it, and I do think it says, as, as, um, James mentioned, I think it says a lot. I don't know what to call you, Chipper James, but anyway. So, I was trying to be more formal. Anyway, as James said, um, having, uh, Chris Merrick advocate for this really says a lot, knowing what his business is, and, um, it just speaks volumes to, he really is looking at the appearance for the town and, and what makes the most sense regardless if it, if it, knowing that it would impact his business. Um, I, too, support keeping, um, one and two under item B in, as the CAC, um, recommended. I think it's consistent with what, not only what we've done with, um, flags, but all the hard work that we do with trash attack and so on and so forth. Um, I think it makes sense not to have the packaging on there, 'cause it's just gonna be a, a litter issue in the town.
Another question, um, a quick one first, I guess, is how, how high can a fence be currently?
There are no restrictions on fence heights. So, fifty feet in the commercial zone would be quite an engineering feat.
That would be.
We, we have one behind the Dare Center, for example, that's, um, I guess it's sixteen feet tall, you know, that, that buffers the neighborhood.
The one behind Lowe's is pretty high, too.
I was gonna say, the one behind Lowe's is taller than that.
Yeah.
So, you know, there, it's, it's not to say that it doesn't cost and that there's not maintenance issues, but, but there are ways to, to, to a- attack this outdoor storage that people are wanting to do.
Absolutely. Um, the other question I had is, I mean, Chris keeps being brought up, and I definitely applaud him for being a part of this. He's in a situation, like a couple of other businesses that might be affected by this, that he's on a corner lot. So, I mean, does he have, it's both right of ways at that point?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I might have to grow some of my own shrubs up a little bit.
Now, does it matter if the enclosure is not, if the enclosure is see-through? As long as it's enclosed, it's okay?
The ordinance says not visible from a right of way by screening or location within an enclosure. So, the visibility part doesn't go away with, with the enclosure. It still has to be not visible. You could do a chain link fence that had the green mesh that you see at tennis courts, maybe, the, they have different variations or the slats. You could still do that type of enclosure, um, that wouldn't be so costly, or you can do a solid fence, or you can do trees.
And are we, if I have a question related to specific business, does that, is that a problem to discuss that? Well, and I'm more just worried about, not that I, I mean, believe it or not, you're probably gonna be surprised at the business I'm gonna ask about, but, okay, without naming any names, um, if we, uh, the way this is adopted, let's say a business sells plants, and they have their plants sitting outside in front of their store, are, is this gonna now, they couldn't have more than ten plants?
Garden centers are exempt.
So, because they have a full garden center, they're okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But if it was a grocery store, is that considered, they're, they are considered garden centers? So, a grocery store that-
They would be limited to ten visible from a right of way.
What happens during Christmas tr- I'm sorry, I'm just thinking of all these things. Christmas trees.
Christmas trees have a special exemption under our Peddlers and Attendant Vendors Ordinance. It allows for sale of Christmas tree during the season.
Great.
She is natural to everything.
That's wonderful. Let me think if I can stump, no, I'm not trying to stump you. Okay. And the fact that, um, never mind, 'cause the whole garden center is exempt, so they're okay, even though you can see into the garden center.
Correct.
Whole garden centers are exempt. Okay, that's good.
As staff, we spend a lot of times actually investigating Lowe's because it, you know, and, and, um, Kmart, but, um, Lowe's has the stacked stuff. When you get further back in their garden center, they actually have shelving that goes up about the whole thirty feet. That's very visible, but that's still within their approved garden center area.
Great, okay.
Kmart, um, might have to move some stuff out of their parking spaces, but they could put it in their garden center area. Um, and, um, so, w- we tried to look at, we tried to look at some of our landscaping businesses that are, that, you know, obviously can't put, you know, everything would die if they put it inside and-
Right.
And tried to, um, accommodate that.
If you, if you have a, going along on the same lines of not naming a store, but if you have a, a large store that's potentially behind another, that has plants for sale near where you're gonna go into it, I mean, is that the same type of thing, where they can only have a few, or?
That's, that's gonna be display, and if they wanna call it storage and I can't see it from the right of way, then I've got nothing to say about it.
I mean, it'd be, it'd be pretty hard to see it, I think, on the corner of eighth there, but-
As far as anyone really gonna complain about it.
True.
That's the other issue, is that-
Okay. Well, I would like to say thank you. I know Sue thanked, um, Melinda, Chris, and you as well, Meredith, and I think you guys, I think Sue, for your leadership with CAC. I think you guys have done a really thorough job. I appreciate you. Having answers to all my questions, it shows that you really, the, the depth of, of how much thought you guys have put into this and looked at all of the scenarios, the what-ifs, and I appreciate your work on that. Um, is anyone ready to make a motion?
Just a reminder, we need to set this for public hearing. Yeah, okay.
And I guess for, in the motion that we're setting the public hearing, you need the version that we're recommending to take to public hearing.
You could just, you could just, um, with the inclusion of B one and B two as originally submitted by the CAC to the Planning Board.
Anyone ready to make a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the proposed amendment to Chapter one-five-three zoning, one-five-three dot zero-zero-two definitions, and the addition of one-five-three dot zero-eight-three, regulate outdoor display to address regulation of outdoor display of merchandise with B one and B two.
And, and that motion is to set a public hearing-
Correct.
For, um, July thirteenth, twenty fifteen, at five-thirty.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Um, one other thing I know that we were, um, supposed to give some consideration to is when we would look to implement this. Um, certainly trying to, should we do that the night of the public hearing, or that's appropriate to do, uh, the discussion after the public hearing?
I would think so. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I follow?
I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, there was a motion to second. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Um, let's see. Next item, uh, under four, recommended action, um, to adopt an operating budget. We have A and B. First is the Budget Ordinance and Consolidated Fee Schedule for the Town for Fiscal Year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and B is the Capital Reserve Ordinance for the Purpose of Construction of and Improvements to Streets and Related Storm War, Storm Water Management. Um, Debbie, any, can you wanna add to that at all?
Um, just, um, to recap, the board, um, did receive the budget, recommended budget from the manager on May the eleventh. You did hold a public hearing on June the eighth. There were no changes, um, to the budget proposed, and we would recommend adoption of the, um, Budget Ordinance fifteen dash three and the Consolidated Fee Schedule as recommended.
Discussion? Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, adopt the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen Budget Ordinance and Consolidated Fee, Fee Schedule for the Town of Kildova Hills as presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. We look forward to carrying out your budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Beverly and her staff, too. And all the department heads and everybody, for sure.
And then item number B, the Capital Reserve Ordinance for the Purpose of the Construction of-
This is just, um, this ord- um, this ordinance, we've had an effect for a number of years and it, and it expired in twenty fifteen, and we're simply, um, asking you to re-adopt it.
Any discussion of renewal of this ordinance? Motion?
I make a motion that, uh, the Board of Commissioners adopt the Capital Reserve Ordinance for the Purpose of Construction and Improvements to Streets and Related Storm Water Management, Ordinance Number fifteen dash four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Okay. Um, Commissioner's agenda. Commissioner?
Uh, it's hot out there. You know, make sure you take care of your pets, and, and if your skin doctor tells you to wear sunscreen all the time, wear it all the time. That's, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ackelman?
I guess I'm wondering how we're gonna handle, um, the state budget if the sales tax redistribution, um, items go into effect. Uh, it's unfortunate. I mean, at least the highlights from the state budget that have been forwarded to us or, that we've looked at are good, in my opinion. Uh, that's certainly one of the big negatives, though. Um, do we, is there a, um, a phased-in approach to this that has not been made clear, I guess, on how we're gonna handle that, or if this goes into effect, it's immediate that we've gotta start looking at revised revenue streams?
The Senate budget, it does have a s-, uh, um, Senate bill does have a phasing approach. It is now in the House.
Right, the House one doesn't, right?
Well, um, I think, I think the majority of the, um, House has some real concerns about the Senate budget. I think they're a long ways from, um, adoption. We're certainly keeping our eye on it, and at any time that, you know, we feel that we're in a crisis, um, or looking at a crisis situation, we'd certainly make the board a- aware.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, I just, it's too soon to tell, but it is something to certainly continue advocacy efforts to oppose the sales tax redistribution.
Right.
Um, I guess, right now, and I don't know that they've been named yet, the Conference Committee for the House and Senate to then try to reconcile the, the budget.
I don't think so. I think they're too, I think, I think they're too far apart for that. I, I just read something briefly, um, earlier today, and I didn't get the impression that it was moving that quickly.
Right. Yeah. And I think, did they do a continuance, and adopt a continuance that can carry the state through December? Is that what you guys?
I, I, I don't know if they did or not. Uh, they're gonna have to do something, 'cause the estimate was they wouldn't have a budget until August.
Right. And then I heard maybe even later, based on what came out of the, the Senate's version that was approved. So, anyway, um, I think it just, we need to continue to watch closely, follow the discussions. Um, uh, certainly, there's been, um, follow-up with the governor who has, um, shared in different forums that he's not supportive of what's being presented, of any of the language that's being presented with the sales tax redistribution. So, I think, you know, if they can, well, not if, once they get to the point of the Conference Committee and we know who's, uh, which representatives and senators on that, it may be, then we can have a more targeted, um, advocacy or communication with them as well, but not there yet. But it is certainly very scary. I mean, it's a, a really big, there's a lot to be concerned about, but hopefully it won't happen. But I think people need to continue to, you know, people need to know, and, and if anyone's watching this that doesn't understand, um, reach out to one of us, someone that does know, to have the conversation of what the potential implications, uh, we've got information that, um, we've shared. We've done some preliminary figures, um, but it's all over the board, 'cause there's multiple, um, versions.
Versions.
Yeah. So...
That was it. That was enough from me.
Okay. Mary, for example?
Yeah, I'm gonna, to mention what you just mentioned, I've, I've had some communication with Paul Tine and, uh, Senator Cook, emails, and, um, I'm not getting, I'm not getting any kind of answers from, from anybody. I mean, maybe to not, it isn't their fault 'cause they don't know.
Right.
But, uh, it seems to me like there is some turmoil, but at the least, uh, going on, and it will be a while before we really know what's gonna happen.
Right.
So, we'll see. That's all I got.
Okay. Um, I don't have anything this evening. So, uh, we'll move on to Town Manager's agenda.
Ma'am, thank you.
Anything else tonight, Steve?
No.
Okay. Consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. We've got kind of a long consent agenda this evening, beginning with amendments from, um, June eighth. Second is budget amendments. Um, the first budget amendment is to appropriate funds from the Dare County Shoreline Management Commission for sand fencing and dune, um, planting. Um, number twenty-three is to record the tech channel support funds. Twenty-four is to provide funds for gov deal fees related to asset sales, and twenty-five is to provide additional funding due to new retirees added to, added to healthcare, um, insurance. Number three is budget transfers, and just briefly, what, what this is, is, um, this is when the department head transfers within a division and I approve it. The Budget Ordinance requires that I report that to the Board of Commissioners, and we have two of those. The first one is, um, to transfer excessive budgeted health premiums in the Police Department to fund animal control salary deficit upon payment of accumulated holiday and comp time balances. And then number nineteen, um, was to provide funds necessary to replace the broken ice maker in the, um, Fire Department Ocean Rescue Division. Number four, um, implementation of additional pay study recommendations. These were simply items that, um, by consensus, the board had allowed us to go ahead and, and complete from, um, the pay study recommendation. Number five is the Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse Expenditures in Continued Construction of the Public Works Complex Master Plan. Um, the recommendation for the, um, lease purchasing will be made to the board at a later time, and at that time, action will be necessary to schedule the public hearing on the real property-related improvements only. This is all, um, in accordance with, um, the North Carolina Local Government Commission as we continue with our Public Works Complex Master Plan and continue those additional phases. And then lastly is a request for approval of application for certificate of taxi cab operations for the Apex Cab Company, and this has been, um, vetted through the Police Department, um, with no relevant reason for denial. An approval of the consent agenda would record the board's approval of this request. However, if you do desire to hold a public hearing, you may, um, but we feel comfortable in recommending your approval for the Apex Cab Company, and staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Questions?
I have a question. On the taxi cab?
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, the person that's mentioned in there for the Apex Cab, and then there's the background check. Is background check just done on that person or all, anybody that would drive for that? Taxi cab drivers have to have background checks, do you know? They do?
He's the only one, in his case, okay, thank you.
They, they would be listed if there were additional drivers.
Right, yeah, I understand, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are the second time set aside this evening for public comment. Yes, James, welcome back.
James Almody, nine hundred ninth Avenue, uh, as I was out on the beach this weekend, uh, and it was ninety-seven degrees, and the water was sixty-three, there was some discussion, uh, ab- about, previous discussion about, uh, portageons at the beach accesses. Uh, I'm just curious, the, you know, how many we have already, how many that we would need to put in, and is there any more discussion about actually doing that, thanks.
Sure. Anyone else wish to speak at public comment? Okay. All right, um, do we have a current inventory off top, I, I know you guys can get it if you don't happen off the top of your head, how many?
If, if I may, um, I'll be happy to have Sean Murphy, our portageon authority, to contact Mr. Almody.
Among other things.
Sean's sailing tonight, so that's the least he can do for us.
Got it, okay.
He'll get in touch with you tomorrow, okay?
Yeah, and then we can share that publicly with everyone, but we'll, okay, great, thank you, anything else tonight?
No.
No? Okay, a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you.